Hello, hello, we are back. It is our 11th session. Session 11 on the Book of Revelation. I want to say thank you so much for joining us tonight. God is good, God's got a plan. Uh, God is in control, God is not surprised, God has never caught off guard. He is God, he is all-knowing, all-powerful, all-present. God is good, God is in control, amen. Jesus Christ is our Redeemer, our Savior. The King of all kings, he's the Lord of all lords. He's the Alpha, the Omega, the beginning, the end. He had the first word, he'll have the last word. He is the Author of our lives, the Author of this story that we're living in. And he is the Finisher of our life, the Finisher of our faith. God has got a special plan for you. God has not forsaken you, God has not forgotten about you, he's not abandoned you. God is not angry at you, God is not punishing you. God took all of his wrath out on his son, Jesus Christ. So that he could pour all of his love and all of his mercy and all of his grace onto you. Can I get an amen? Amen. Let's pray. We're gonna get started, we're in our Revelation Bible study. We're taking 20 looks at the Book of Revelation for 2020 vision. In the year of 2020. A lot of times we say, hey hindsight's 2020. We don't want to be that way as believers, we want to be able to look forward with clarity and clear vision to see what God has done, what God is doing and God and what God will do. The Bible says, seek first the kingdom and you'll find it. If we read the Book of Revelation, chapter 11, it summarizes it in the first five words, it says, "The revelation of Jesus Christ." That's what the book's about, it's not about the Antichrist. It's not about the one world government, it's not about the one world currency. It's not about the harlot, it's not about the beast, it's not about the different things, the mark of the beast, 666. All those are parts of the story. But the book is written to reveal the identity of Jesus Christ. So I promise you this, if you seek first the kingdom of God, you'll find it. If you seek first greed, you'll find it, if you seek first perversion, you'll find it, if you seek something else first, you'll find that, but the Bible says, seek first the kingdom. So we're gonna find the kingdom, we're gonna find Jesus in the Book of Revelation and in the world that we live in. So Father God, we love you. God, we bless you, would you say this out loud with me? God, prepare my heart, prepare my mind, prepare my spirit and my soul to hear and consume your word. In the mighty name of Jesus. Yeshua Hamashiach, Jesus the Christ, the Messiah, the one and only, the way, the truth, the life. The one who died, was buried and rose again and ascended on high and sits at the right hand of the Father. Jesus the Christ, amen. Turn with me to Revelation, chapter 12. We left off, um, in session 10. We left off on the topic of spiritual warfare. So I just want to recap just real quickly on spiritual warfare. We are in a spiritual war. Um, a lot of times when we think about the second coming of Christ, we go to the physical world, which is good and accurate, but we can't negate the spiritual realm. So we go to the physical world and we say, oh, there's wars and there's rumors of wars and there's earthquakes and pestilence and plagues. And there's a lot of things coming down the pipe. And those are true, but let us not negate the spiritual battle that is waged, that has been waged against us. And that is, that is in full blossom. The war against the family. The war of divorce, the war of abandonment, the war of adultery. The war of pornography, the world of sexual, the war of sexual perversion. The war of poverty, the war of suicide, abandonment, rejection, loneliness, fear, anxiety, stress. We sometimes consider those things as just these part, you know, just this part of living in this world. That is a kingdom rising against a kingdom. It's the kingdom of hell coming against the kingdom of God in your life. For example, Jesus says, "I'm gonna give you life to the fullest abundantly." Satan says, "Hey, it's better to take your life, there's nothing left of this world for you, you screwed up so bad, just end your life." So Satan brings a war of death against God's position of life. So we have to see that this war is raging harder and faster than it ever has in our world as a whole. Depression, um, schizophrenia, bipolar, all of these attacks on the mind. Anxiety, stress, all the attacks on the mind that, that, that bring heart disease and stomach ulcers and the, you know, just the onslaught of physical, uh, um, problems. This is a war. So when it talks about wars, it doesn't just mean nuclear war, Russia's gonna invade America and, uh, Pakistan's invading India and, you know, those are real wars too. But let's not negate and just, you know, fluff aside the spiritual war. So tonight, we're gonna talk about spiritual warfare from that aspect. But we're also gonna talk about the rapture. So if you look with me, um, on your notes, we have notes for each session, uh, before I forget. If you want a copy of our notes, you can just go to our website, Whitestone Church TX and go to the contact us drop down. Give us your information, just give us your email, that's all we need. We'll fire it off to you, we're not gonna call you, we're not gonna, you know, solicit you, we're just gonna send you the notes, it's that simple. If you have a prayer request, give, give us your, give us a prayer request, we have a, a strong group of people in our church that, that will pray for you. So, um, in our notes, we're gonna talk about four different views of tribulation. Now some of you just got a funny look on your face, four different views of the tribulation, yeah. There's four different views of the tribulation, the most popular, um, is, is, uh, the, is the pre-tribulation rapture. And let me back up, I apologize, I, I said the word tribulation, I meant rapture. We're gonna look at four different views of the rapture. Now before we go into the rapture, let me, or we go into these different views, let me emphatically say to you, um, I believe in the rapture. So please hear me say that. I believe personally that there will be a harpazo, a rapture, a catching in the sky, a meeting God in the sky, a catching up. What I don't know, and I'm very upfront about that. What I don't know and what I am trying to figure out, best I can, is when will the rapture take place? There's very, there is a, there is a growing contingency that doesn't believe in the rapture, but most Christians, and the Bible teaches a rapture. So I want to emphatically say to you, I believe in the rapture. What I'm not going to emphatically say to you is when the rapture will take place, because I don't believe I can. Now there's plenty of good rabbis, scholars, Bible, uh, teachers that have studied the subject intently. Um, Messianic rabbis. And they, they all have different opinions. And they all have different opinions for really good reasons. But I think in this, you may come up with your own opinion. But I don't want you to come up with your own opinion based upon what I call bumper sticker Christianity or bumper sticker theology. Just, "Oh, I watched this movie and that's what they said and it was a really convincing movie, so therefore I believe that." Or, "I read this book and it was really convincing," or, "I read this scholar or this commentary." My question to you is, why do you believe what you believe? And did you get that belief because you read the Bible? A lot of us have this commentary struggle. We'll be reading the word of God and we'll come to a funny word or a funny passage or something we don't understand. So within about three seconds, we'll quickly drop down to the bottom of our Bible and we'll find the reference guide and we'll go, "Man, I didn't understand verse 7." And we'll go down there and we'll read, "Oh, now I understand verse 7, woo, thank God for the commentary." Now, listen, I'm not anti-commentary. I'm not anti-study guides and, 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 uh, uh, different tools, par- parallel Bibles, Strong's dictionary. I'm not a, all those are good things. But before you jump to the commentary, settle with that verse and read that verse in several different translations. Read all of the parallel verses that go with it. Verses in other places of the Bible that use the same word or they use the same terminology. And a lot of times it will define it for you, scripture defining scripture. Also sit there and say, "Holy Spirit, would you explain this verse to me? Cause man, it's really hard to understand. What do you mean by what you just said? Eat my flesh, drink my blood, what does that mean? Oh my God, that's..." Ask God what he's saying. Be careful not to just quickly drop down. The thing about a commentary, you gotta remember, it's one man's opinion. Now he's very educated and he knows what he's talking about and I'm not saying he's wrong. But I am saying he's a man with his own opinion. So study the word of God. So when we come to this topic of the rapture, please hear me say, "I believe in the rapture." What I don't know is when precisely the rapture will happen. So there are four rapture views. Now you're gonna, some of you will say, "Four? I didn't know there was four." There's four, and I'll tell them to you. The first one, the most common is the pre-tribulation rapture. Books like Left Behind, most Hollywood movies, uh, are gonna be pre-tribulation rapture. How Lindsey, their great, late, great planet Earth, uh, Tim Lehay, uh, one of my favorite Bible teachers ever, Chuck Missler. They're all pre-tribulation rapture scholars and teachers. And it's a good thing, but you gotta understand this, that's the most popular opinion and that's great. Just because it's the most popular doesn't make it right, but it is the most popular opinion. And I have a hard time really arguing against it, but I do have some opinions about it. Um, the, the pre-tribulation rapture was not taught until about the 19th century. So it's a pretty relatively new eschatological, uh, I didn't say that word right. Um, it's, it's a, it's a pretty new view of the rapture, of eschatology, it's, it's a pretty new view of the rapture within the last 150, 175 years. Doesn't make it wrong, it's just the newest opinion. The, so we got pre-tribulation, pre-tribulation rapture means this, that Jesus Christ will come back for his bride. His bride means the saved believers, his church, before the seven-year tribulation starts. So before we go through this seven years of tribulation and three and a half years of great tribulation, pre-seven years, Jesus Christ will come back and catch his bride. Now, there's a lot of verses that support this. That's the most popular opinion. The next view is called mid-tribulation rapture. A mid-tribulation rapture means that at the breaking point of the three and a half years, the separation from tribulation to great tribulation. The seven-year period of time is referred to as the tribulation. But at the halfway point, after 42 months, after 1,260 days, the Antichrist will go into the Jewish temple, which will be rebuilt. He'll go into Israel and he will break his agreement with the Jew. The Jew will be at peace with all their Arab nation, uh, neighbors. The Antichrist will bring a false sense of peace. And at the midpoint, halfway point, what Daniel calls it is the abomination of desolation. So the Antichrist will do something that will break, break that deal. And then we'll spend three and a half years, the great tribulation, persecuting the Jews, chasing the Jew to kill them. The mid-tribulation rapture is the view that at that three and a half years, Jesus Christ will rapture his church. That's the minority view, by the way, the, the majority view is pre. The second most popular is post. And the minority view is mid. Post-tribulation rapture is the, the, uh, most, is the oldest belief. It's the one that, uh, has been around the longest. Post-tribulation rapture basically means this, that at the end of the tribulation, at the end of the seven-year tribulation, at the return of Christ, before, when, when Jesus returns, he's gonna judge the earth. The double-edged sword, he will destroy, the battle of Armageddon, he will destroy Satan, the Antichrist, the world armies that fight against God, and I know it's a radical idea. But they'll fight against God, he'll destroy them. The post-tribulation view is that simultaneously, the believers, whether they're pre-tribulation, tribulation saints, regardless of when they got saved, that they're still alive, Jesus will rapture them and then destroy the earth. Now, the fourth view is what's called the pre-wrath rapture. It teaches that the rapture will occur in the last half of the tribulation before the seven bowls of judgment of God's wrath, which will be poured out on the earth. So we haven't got to the bowls of judgment, we've been through the seals and the trumpets and we're at the end of the trumpet stage. But we'll talk about the bowls. So I just want to put in your mind, because we've not talked about this at all in our first 10 sessions intentionally. Because most people don't really want to know what Revelation say, they just want somebody to tell them what it says. And what I really want you to do is to read Revelation for yourself and know what it says. So to get there, you gotta get through the heavy stuff. And we spent 10 sessions kind of getting through the heavy stuff. And now we're getting into what is most more commonly known. So when we talk about rapture, we know that there will be a rapture. My concern is if we just automatically consume, "Oh, it's gonna be pre-tribulation rapture." Then we may have this idea that, "Oh, nothing bad will happen to the church, nothing bad will happen to me. It'll just happen to those poor people that weren't saved like I got saved." If we have this idea that, "Oh, it's the post-rapture, post-tribulation rapture." Well then we could be lulled to sleep with that, "Hey, you know, there's nothing, uh, you know, there's nothing we could do about it, we're just gonna go through it." Here, here's the thing. I just want you to settle on where are you at? I'm not gonna really try to convince you one way or the other, I'm not gonna try to convince you into my thoughts and, and I'm not gonna push you into somebody else's, I just want you to settle in and go, "Okay, why do I believe what I believe? Is it because my pastor told me that? Is it because my Sunday school or is it just because that book? I want you to believe it because you read it in the word of God, can I get an amen? Let's go to 2 Thessalonians, chapter 2. Now listen to this very carefully, this is a chapter you need to really study for yourself, 2 Thessalonians, chapter 2. Now Cameron, put your name in the Bible, now brethren, now Whitestone Church, now those listening right now, now say your name out loud, now, concerning the coming of our Lord, Jesus Christ. Okay, the second coming, this is the return. The rapture is the catching away, the return is the coming of the, of judgment. It's when Jesus comes on his white horse and destroys those who are in opposition to him. The first time Jesus came, he came as a baby, in a manger, in a humble setting. The second coming, he comes back as a warring king, a victor to claim his earth. And he's coming back on a white horse with the double-edged sword coming out of his mouth. Can I get an amen? So when we talk about the return of Christ, that's not the rapture. Most people say, "Well, when Jesus comes back, he's gonna rapture us." No, the rapture is the catching away of the saints. The second coming is the return of Christ. So now concerning the coming of our Lord, Jesus Christ, and our gathering together with him. Now 2 Thessalonians spells out, those are kind of two separate events. Now, it seems that they may happen simultaneously here, which I believe. But it is definitely talking about two different events, so I need you to read that yourself and just say, "God, would you help me to understand?" Now brethren, concerning the coming of our Lord, Jesus Christ, and our gathering together to him, we ask you not to be soon shaken and mined or troubled. Don't be, don't be shaken, don't be tossed to and fro, either by spirit, word, or letter, as if from us, as though the day of Christ had come. Let no one deceive you, Cameron, let no one deceive you, say your name there. Let no one deceive you by any means. For that day, what day? This, the return of Christ, for that day will not come unless the falling away comes first. The falling away of what? And the man of sin, listen to this, the man of sin is revealed, that's Satan, that's the Antichrist. The son of perdition, the Antichrist, a different label. Who opposes and exalts himself above all that is called God or that is worshiped. So that he sits as God in the temple of God. Satan wants to be God, he thinks he's God. He doesn't want to be the pitchfork-horned-tailed guy with a, you know, a, a pitchfork in hell, he doesn't want to rule hell. He wants to sit in heaven, that's the Tower of Babel, let us reach heaven. He wants to invade heaven. He wants to destroy Jesus. Satan is an angelic being, although fallen, he understands spiritual battle. And he understands, and he's been to the throne of God, now he hates God. And he's so deceived and so prideful that he believes he could kill God and take his throne. So listen to it again. The son of perdition who opposes and exalts himself, Satan exalts himself above that, uh, all that is called God or that is worshiped. So that he sits as God in the temple of God, showing himself that he is God. Where will Satan sit? In the tribulation? What could the abomination of desolation mean? Satan will go sit on the holy of holies. The very place that the Jews revere as the most holy place on earth. The Antichrist himself will go and sit on the throne, which is going to be the throne of Jesus Christ. He'll sit to mimic God, he'll want to rule the world from a throne that's reserved for God. This will be a real event. There will be a real rebuilding of the temple in Jerusalem. There will be a real Antichrist man who rules the world. There will be a real false prophet man who rules the world religiously. There will be a real one-world government beast system that rules the world physically. So when we read this, let's put it in its context, verse 5. "Do you not remember that I'm still with you and I told you these things? And now know, now you know that what is restraining..." So what's restraining Satan, the lawless one? What's preventing him right now? It's the Holy Spirit. Now, there's some theology out there that says, "Now when the Holy Spirit is taken out of the way..." Let me, let me read it, sorry, I skipped over, verse 7. For, or verse 5 to 6 and 7. "Do you not remember that when I was still with you, I told you these things? And now you know what is restraining, that he may be revealed in his own time." The Antichrist. "For the mystery of lawlessness is already at work. Only he who now restrains will do so until he's taken out of the way." That's the Holy Spirit. The Holy Spirit's not gonna leave planet earth. There's some theology out there that says, "Oh, see, because the pre-tribulation rapture, the church is gonna leave and the Holy Spirit's gonna leave and the devil's gonna take over." That's not true. The Holy Spirit is restricting Satan today. The day that Jesus says it's time for the Antichrist, the lawless one, the son of perdition, to do his thing, is the day that the Holy Spirit will move and allow him to do it. The Holy Spirit's not leaving earth. If the Holy Spirit is gonna leave earth just because of the rapture, then how could anybody get saved? How could any tribulation saint get saved? The Spirit of God is just going to allow prophecy to be fulfilled. Allow that what the words of God has already spoken. So that's when he's taken out of the way, and then verse 8. "And then the lawless one will be revealed, whom the Lord will consume..." I love this verse. "The Lord will consume the devil, consume the Antichrist, consume Satan, devil, whatever you wanna call him. Consume him with the breath of his mouth and destroy him with the brightness of Jesus's return." Jesus Christ doesn't need a sword, he doesn't need a grenade, he doesn't need a knife, he doesn't need a nine-millimeter or a tank. He just comes back and says, "Satan, you're done." With the breath of his mouth, the sword of his words, and then the brightness of his... Satan hates brightness, he hates the kingdom of light. He'll be destroyed because Jesus Christ just walks in the room. When Jesus Christ fills you, here's a, here's a fact about spiritual warfare. When you walk in the Holy Spirit, every demon in hell shudders that you'll exercise your authority. If you walk in the Holy Spirit, the devil, the last thing he wants you to do is open your mouth and show the power through your words and say, "Depression, out of my house, in the name of Jesus. Fear, out of my house. Pornography, perversion, not tonight, in the name of Jesus, I cast you out." And instead of turning the lights off, because that's where darkness prevails, we turn the lights on, not just physical lights, but the light of the power of the Holy Spirit. Satan will be destroyed by the word of God's mouth and the brightness of his coming. The coming of the lawless one is according to the working of Satan. Now Satan will possess the Antichrist. The lawless one, the possession of this Antichrist will be a full-bodied possession of Satan possessing this guy. No different than when Jesus walked the earth, he was possessed with the Holy Spirit. Now you may go, "Oh, don't, don't use that word." No, possess means ownership, possession. Jesus Christ is owned by the Holy Spirit. That's why Satan couldn't stump him. When we're not owned by the Holy Spirit, when we, when we walk out of the place where we belong, that's when we get attacked by the enemy, that's when we succumb to the enemy. The coming of the lawless one, Satan with all of his power, this is, this is what Satan and the Antichrist will have, they'll have power, signs. Now we'll look at this in a minute in Revelation 12. Signs means signals. A signal is a sign. So signs and signals are the same word. Power, signs, and lying wonders, lying wonders. Wonders, you know, the gift of signs and wonders is the ability to do miracles. And it's one of the nine spiritual gifts that still exist today. Those nine gifts did not cease to exist with the last apostle. That's the enemy that doesn't want you to operate in power, just operate in form. One of the nine gifts is gift of wisdom, gift of knowledge, gift of faith, signs and wonders. Signals and wonders, the wonders part is miraculous things happening. So the Antichrist will do signs and wonders. He's gonna do what we call miracles. So you gotta ask yourself the question. There's a lot of satanic demonic healings that go on. And what that means is that those people call upon powers of hell to do things supernaturally to bring peace and to bring calm and to, to heal bodies. But with Satan, there's always strings attached. It's always a facade, it's never true healing. So when Satan does something, just because it's, let me say, just because you see something supernatural does not mean that it comes from heaven. It could also have come from hell, a false deity or a false power. "Satan with power, signs, and wonders, and with all and righteous deception among those who perish, because they did not receive the love and the truth that they might be saved. For this reason, God will send strong delusion, that they should believe the lie, that they will be condemned to do not believe the truth, and had no pleasure, but had pleasure in unrighteousness." Listen, I don't know where your pleasure is, but if it's in unright, if it's in unrighteousness, we gotta repent and change today. Turn with me to Revelation, chapter 12. Revelation chap, Revelation, chapter 12 is where we, where we're picking up tonight. We'll talk about two kingdoms, there's two kingdoms. The kingdom of light and the kingdom of darkness, or the kingdoms of this world. A good king, now let's just, growing up in America, we don't understand the concept of king and queen. We have president and senate and congress and, and all the, you know, the house and all this different governmental rule. But it, under the king and queen, the king has a kingdom. The kingdom is the king's dom- The kingdom is the king's domain. It's the king's territory. So the king of England had a kingdom. He had a king, a castle, a throne, he had subjects. But as he gained territory, as, 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 uh, as Great Britain started to take over, they would conquer islands or conquer different places of, of, you know, Africa and different countries. So the king's kingdom went underneath his rulership. So a king has a kingdom and a kingdom is territory. Now a good king is responsible for his subjects. He's responsible for their education. The, the, uh, military protection. Food, culture. A good king provides medicine and, and, and services, if you will. A kingdom has a language. It has, um, uh, different, um, uh, my, I'm losing my thought. It has a different, it has a life of its own. So a kingdom is a place where a king dwells. So God, Jesus says, take the kingdom to the people. Bring my people into my kingdom. Bring my people into my kingdom. You know people by the, what kingdom they belong to, by the way they talk. The language they use, the clothes they wear, the lifestyle they live. How do they provide, do they, are they replicas of the king? Or do they look like a different kingdom? So we're gonna look at these two different kingdoms. Satan wages war against God's kingdom. Now he doesn't do this just as an angel. He does it by manipulating man's kingdoms to wage war against God's kingdom. Jesus is gonna come back and separate the sheep nations from the goat nations. He's gonna separate that, the wheat from the shaft. He's gonna separate those attributes that don't belong in his kingdom, those people that are not subject to his rulership. So are you and I subject to his rulership? Or are we just subject, do we just want the kingdom, but we don't wanna be subject to the king? I say this, if you don't wanna pray now, why do you wanna pray in heaven? If you don't wanna spend time with God, why would you want to when you enter his kingdom? You're either the, the, the king's son or daughter now, or you're really not. Oh, whoa, I said the prayer. Listen to this verse, second Thessalonians two, you gotta read it, thirteen. But we are bound to give thanks to God always for you brethren, Cameron beloved by the Lord, because God from the beginning chose you for salvation through sanctification. If you have a highlighter, highlight it, salvation through sanctification. What does that mean? Means this. Lot of us come to the altar to Jesus, I give you my life, Jesus, I give you my life. But then we don't allow him to sanctify us, we don't allow him to change us. Sanctification means to turn you into a saint, to make you saint-like. To change the way you talk. To change the way you think. To change the way you act. To put you through this sanctification process. Satan wages war against God's, God's kingdoms, God's kingdom through using kingdoms of the world. The dragon in Revelation represents a kingdom, I call it a beast system. The dragon in Revelation represents a beast system that is ruled by Satan. Now let me throw out a couple kingdoms and we'll get to them again in a minute. The kingdoms, there's been seven super kingdoms, if you will, in the world. Egypt, Assyria, Babylon, Persia, Greece, Rome, and what Revelation would call the second Rome, or the second world dictatorship. So we see kingdoms that have, that have manifested throughout, uh, the ages. Go to Revelation chapter twelve. Here we are. I'm, we, we started here last time, yes, in, in our last session. But I wanna just pull out a couple, couple key words, or a couple key sentences. Revelation chapter twelve, verse one. Now a great sign appeared in heaven. Revelation chapter seven. Uh, uh, Revelation twelve, three. Let me back up, Revelation twelve, one, now a great sign appeared in heaven. Revelation twelve, three. And another sign appeared in heaven. Now remember, sign means signal. So verse one and verse three, signs appear in heaven. Verse seven, war broke out in heaven, all three of these have been in heaven. Verse thirteen, now when the dragon saw that he had been cast down to earth. So in the first twelve verses, we see heavenly vision, heavenly signs. When we hit verse thirteen, we're back on earth. So you gotta figure out what location are we talking about? Go with me to Revelation chapter one, I wanna read the first three verses. Now a great sign appeared in heaven, a woman clothed with the sun, with the moon under her feet, the woman is Israel. The woman is Israel. And on her head is a garland of twelve stars, Revelation twelve, verse one. Then being with child, the child is Jesus Christ. Israel birthed the Messiah. Not just Mary, but Israel birthed Messiah, the Messiah. She cried out in labor pain, she cried out in labor and in pain to give birth. And another sign appeared in heaven, behold, a great fiery red dragon having seven heads, ten horns, seven diadems or crowns on his heads. Now, you need to write this stuff down. Um, in your notes, if you'll, if you'll scroll down with me. Seven heads are seven mountains. Now, turn to Revelation thirteen and verse one, and we'll read just the first verse. We're gonna tie these together. Revelation twelve and thirteen are talking about the same dragon. And are talking about the same event. Twelve is kinda giving us this summary, thirteen's going into a little bit more depth. So look at chapter thirteen, verse one. Then I stood on the sand of the sea, and I saw a beast rising up out of the sea, now that doesn't mean water, that word sea there means people. Rising up out of the people. Having seven heads, ten horns, and on his horns, ten crowns, and on his heads, a blasphemous name. Now it's the same description, except in chapter thirteen, it adds blasphemous names. Let's talk about these seven heads. Because what I want us to see is that this system is already here. What I don't want us to believe is, oh, we're loving God, it's not that bad, it's certainly not as bad as it's gonna be. The reason we don't think it's so bad is because of what we watch on TV. We don't think it's so bad, because we've been indoctrinated on what Hollywood or the kingdom of entertainment has told us is entertainment. Oh, they just dropped the F-bomb three times, it's no big deal, my twelve-year-old, he can still watch it. Oh yeah, no, I know, it's, it's just dabbling in witchcraft, but man, my four-year-old, they can still watch that. Oh yeah, no big deal. See, what I don't want us to believe is that this system is coming, the system's already here. And if we're not careful, we'll be the frog in the boiling pot that says, oh, it's not that hot. But the temperature's slowly being turned up and we're being boiled to death. Let me ask you a question. Is it bad enough today? Morally, ethically, spiritually? Is there enough sin, enough lawlessness? Enough perversion? Enough stress, enough headache, enough pain? Uh, enough lovers of, of our flesh, lovers of ourself, haters of authority? Is there enough perversion? Talked about in Galatians five and other, is there enough sorcery going around? Is there enough pharmacay, is there enough drug use, is there enough murder? Is there enough going around for Jesus to return? Is there enough that the Antichrist couldn't come on the scene today? There is absolutely enough. The problem is, is we've been lulled to sleep to say, oh, it's okay, it's not that bad, come on. It's not that bad, come on. Let's talk about it. Seven heads are seven mountains. In, uh, Revelation seventeen, nine. It says, here, here, here is the mind which has wisdom. Revelation seventeen, nine, here's the mind that has wisdom. Wisdom does not come from age. Now you may have earthly wisdom from age. But the wisdom here is a spiritual gift of wisdom. James, if, if you ask God for anything, ask him for wisdom, don't ask him for gold. Don't ask him for promotion, ask him for wisdom. Here is the mind which has wisdom. The seven heads. So this beast comes out of the sea, out of the people, it's got seven heads. It's got ten horns and ten diadems or crowns, and they're all full of blasphemous names. The seven heads are seven mountains, so I want you to write on your paper, seven mountains. Ba, uh, uh, Bill Bright, the founder of Campus Crusade for Christ, received a revelation from the Lord in the seventies. Lance Wallnau, W A L L N A U, Lance Wallnau, has carried that torch, if you will, on seven mountain teaching. It's powerful, you need to dig in deep. But here are the seven mountains Satan's invading, setting up his kingdom. Let me just say it again. I don't, I, I don't want us to just go, oh, well, the devil's gonna set up his kingdom in one of those Middle East, uh, eastern countries over there that's worshiping the devil and, you know, they got corrupt and they hate Jews and they hate Christians. Okay, all that's true. But where's he setting it up in America? Oh, Las Vegas, yeah, that's a devil's playground, okay, true. But where else is he setting it up? Could it be that Satan is already setting up his beast system? Could it be that the seven-headed beast coming out, which does represent seven kingdoms? Literal, Persia, uh, um, Babylon, Egypt, I get it. But could it be that he's invaded the, he's invading the seven mountains? This is a strong message. Here's the seven mountains, there's seven mountains of influence. A mountain influences and shapes the identity of a culture and people. There's the mountain of business, so write on your paper, the mountain of business. There is the mountain of governmental influence, so business has influence. Government has influence. There's the religious mountain. There is a family mountain. There's the education mountain, the media mountain, and the entertainment mountain, and arts, arts and entertainment. Culturally, in every nation in the world, there are seven mountains of great influence that shapes the culture of that nation, or that kingdom, or that people group. If you look at the year twenty twenty and business acumen, it is different than business culture of nineteen eighty. It's different than business culture of nineteen fifty. It's, it's different than business culture in nineteen hundred. Now, business is a mountain. And you can get to the top of your business mountain. And you'll have tremendous influence. So, everybody's called to a mountain, let me say it like this. There's a calling on your life that God wants you to climb to the top of one of, or a couple of, or all of these seven mountains. God has positioned you with your talent and your ability, your mindset, your personality, that hey, you may be really, really good at governmental politics. And you love, you just have a passion for government. Or you may have a passion for sports and, and art, uh, or, or entertainment. You're called to a mountain. So let me give a better example, real quick. Um, Tiger Woods climbed to the top of his mountain in professional golf, worldwide, the best third had ever seen. And he's in a small group of people, Ben Crenshaw and, and these other great golfers. So you take Tiger Woods who reached the top of his mountain. If he's hitting Nike golf balls, and you wanna climb the golf mountain and you wanna play golf, what golf balls are you most likely gonna buy? Because he's influenced you. If he's wearing a certain type of, uh, clothing when he plays golf, you're more likely to buy that clothing, that's why they, they want him to advertise for their stuff, because he reached the top of that mountain. If you reach the top of your governmental mountain and you are the president of the United States, then you've reached the top of that mountain, your influence is huge. Tiger Woods has a huge influence over young golfers. And I'm, I'm not using him as an example, I don't know him personally. But if he does it, other people say, oh, that's okay. If he doesn't do it, then they go, oh yeah, let's not do that. He influences people. From our, our musicians, to our authors of our books, to our governmental leaders, to our business leaders. Kathy Truitt, the owner of Chick-fil-A, the founder of Chick-fil-A, his culture, he's reached the top of the mountain in the fast food world. And his running and owning of a company was very different than the owner and runner and founder of McDonald's. Two very different mindsets, spiritually, financially, how do you treat your people? What's the culture of your business? So the influence that you have on the top of that mountain is huge. Governmentally, I, I, I'm, and again, I'm not going political, but I will use this as an example, Bill Clinton. He reaches the top of the governmental mountain in the nineties as president of the United States. But he has an affair with Monica Lewinsky. And he tells a generation of people, hey, it's okay what you do in your personal life, it has no effect on your public life. What you do behind closed doors has no effect on leading, you know, presidential work. So he, what he in essence told every politician, every young senator, every young congressman and woman, is hey, it doesn't matter if you have adultery, it doesn't matter. Listen, his influence at the top of that mountain led people closer to God or further away from God. That's at the basis of what it is. There's religious mountains. You could be a preacher of Christianity and have great influence by leading people closer to the Lord or leading them into religion. David Koresh, Jim Jones, other leaders. Uh, um, uh, Joseph Smith, the founder of Mormonism. Leaders who lead people either closer to God or further away from God. So when we look at these seven mountains of influence, we have to ask ourselves, how much influence does the morning DJ have on our favorite radio station as we drive into work? What are the jokes we're laughing to, what's their political bent? What's their mindset, are they cynical and rude? Or are they, or are they joyful and trusting the Lord? What's the, what's the influence that we're listening to? The beast has already invaded, Satan himself has invaded all seven of these mountains. And I could sit here for hours telling you the good and bad stories of them. But I'm at, I'm telling you this, you've got to look at these mountains of influence in your own life. And say, you know what, I used to believe in God till I went to, till I went to college. And my professor, man, he convinced me that there's no God, that this world just came out of the big bang and I just came from a monkey. Man, I don't have no real purpose, I'm just here to live and party. Listen, that educational mountain has changed the mindset of an entire culture that would say, oh yeah, Darwinism and, 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 uh, you know, survival of the fittest and, oh yeah, that's the way it is, you know, and yeah, the Bible's good, but the Bible's not really a history book, the Bible's not really a science book, the Bible's not really a, a, a book. But in every reference to science, the Bible's a hundred percent true. In every reference to history, the Bible's never been false or wrong about any historical statement, so it is a historical book. It is a scientific book. It is a book because it came from the word of God, so it is still alive and it's true today, regardless of what the mountains of influence tell us. Regardless of what the mountains of influence tell us. We live in a culture that says, oh, it's good for my kids to read Harry Potter. Really? Oh, yeah, at least they're reading preacher, they just gotta, no, they're reading witchcraft. Because somewhere in the mountain of education that says, oh, this is good for eight to twelve year olds. Oh yeah, yeah, it's just fun, it's just witchcraft, it's just fun little demonology, it's okay. No, 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 those mountains, Satan is sitting on those mountains. And it is prepping a generation, a culture of people and dumbing us down. And making us go, well, one day, the devil's gonna bring his government in. Really? Oh, gluttony in America is already here. Sexual perversion to the heightened ability of getting it anywhere we want on our phones and portable device, it's here. All the mountains have been invaded by Satan. And those are kingdoms. So when it says this ten, or, I'm sorry, this seven horned, or this seven head. Monster, this beast comes out of the sea. We've got to see, it's already here, his govern- just, one day if he moves into a building. And he, and he gets some, uh, articles incorporation and he puts some bylaws in the constitution of the devil down on paperwork. Well, yeah, well, then I guess it'll be official, but it's already gonna be here. We've got to see it. The seven mountains. Here is the mind which has wisdom, the seven mountain, the seven heads are seven mountains. On which the woman sits, we'll get to the woman later, this is the harlot, the whore that rides the beast. Mountains represent territories and kingdoms, my question is, has the devil invaded your territory? Has he already invaded your kingdom? If you'll bow to it at the bottom of the mountain, you'll bow to it at the top. If you bow now, you'll bow later. If you steal. Out of the cash register, cuz your billion dollar a year company's not gonna miss a couple hundred bucks. Then you'll steal when you become CEO. If you lie now, you'll lie when you're President of the United States, if you'll bow as a city, uh, on the city council. You'll bow when you get elected to Congress. If you take a bribe today, you'll take a bribe when, when you get the badge and you, and you support the police department. What you bow to at the bottom of the mountain is what you'll bow to at the top, God's saying, we've got to see the kingdoms. Listen to what Satan says to Jesus, and, and this is deep stuff. This is, this is what Satan says to Jesus in the desert. If you remember, Satan tempts Jesus with three things, food, and it wasn't just food, but it was the flesh. Then he tries to get him with power. And then compromise. And the power is when he says, Jesus, if you'll bow down to me, I'll give you the kingdoms of the world. Hey, Jesus, you wanna end poverty and starvation in Ethiopia, bow down to me. Hey, Jesus, you wanna end, uh, you, you wanna prevent Stalin's reign in Russia? And how he, how he kills millions of people of his own land, you wanna end that, bow down to me. Hey, Jesus, you wanna, you wanna do this, bow, listen, Satan wanted Jesus to bow to him to give him the kingdoms. To give him the nations of the world. Now he wouldn't have done it, it wasn't, he was trying to usurp, he's trying to get Satan, Jesus to worship him, Jesus like, get out of here. Listen to this. Of all, this is what Satan says in Luke four. Of all these things will I give unto you and glory of them, if you'll bow down and worship me, for they are mine. And I can give them to whoever I will. Well, who gave them to Satan, Adam? Now the fact that they are still Satan's is demonstrated by the fact that the Antichrist, which is yet. His future receives from him his authority and power and throne. And so Satan is going to invest in a man, all of his power, his authority, and it will be Satan in the flesh. The ten horns, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move quickly here, the ten horns are ten kings of the earth that are ruled by the Antichrist. When the Antichrist comes to power, he'll divvy up responsibility to ten underlings. And he'll give them quote unquote power, and he'll give them a sense of individuality. Tomorrow night, we'll talk about what does the one world government, currency and religion look like? But from the ten, the ten horns are ten kings, uh, who will be subject to Satan. Three of them he will destroy and take it to seven. Um, and, and Satan, the Antichrist himself, according to Zechariah, chapter eleven, verse seventeen. He will most likely be assassinated or an attempted assassination, some sort, it'll be an assassination. And he could be blind in his right eye and on his right arm. And so on your notes, I just brought out to you a couple of cultic symbols that you'll see. Um, that are very predominant in our culture, and we, we even have one of them on the back of our dollar bill. Uh, and we just go, oh yeah, well, it's just that, it's just that weird, that weird cool thing from the past. No, these are all Antichrist, Illuminati, Luciferianism symbology. To prep us for the Antichrist. Um, even in the Avenger movie, you could, or, you know, Thor, or whatever movie it is. Um, you can just see it, it's this eye, and when you see that, it's representative. Of Zechariah eleven seventeen, you'll have to read it yourself, there's blasphemous names. On the, on the, on the heads, listen, Satan doesn't care. Who you bow down to and worship. As long as it's not Jesus the Christ. As long as you worship a blasphemous name, he doesn't care. It's kinda like Satan doesn't care if you dr- if you die of heroin overdose, alcohol overdose. Cutting your own, uh, throat, he doesn't care if you die of a heart attack because you work too much, just be addicted to something. Work, drugs, alcohol, porn. You know, depressions, he doesn't care what takes you out, just as long as you're taken out. So when I was talking about these blasphemous names, the Antichrist will set up all these blasphemous names. To worship himself. The Antichrist will be a man in, in chapter thirteen, Revelation thirteen. The, the Antichrist will come out of the people, the false prophet. Is who we'll pick up with tomorrow night. The false prophet will set up a worldwide religion. And I wanna say this emphatically, it won't be that we all convert to the same religious practice. We're not all gonna convert to Catholicism and be ruled by the Pope. We're not all gonna be, uh, converted to Islam and, and worship Muhammad. We're not all gonna convert to Hinduism and, and worship a myriad of, of, you know, millions of different, no. We're not going to all convert to the same. The Antichrist is going to fool us, which is already happening. And saying, you be you, you find your own path to God, just be spiritual, be mindful. All these words, these are, when, when you hear mindful, that's not what it's meant twenty-five years ago. When you hear spiritual, that's not what it meant when you learned it in, in Sunday school. These are buzzwords and labels to say, be and do whatever you wanna do, however you find your pathway to God. Not Jesus, not Christ, God. Find your own path, the one world religion's already here. The beast system, the one world government, it's already here. There's gonna be ten nations underneath the Antichrist, there'll be ten kingdoms. I don't know if America, well, I don't know what it'll look like, it may be, uh, uh, you know, a different form, it, it, you know, maybe we join up with. Other countries and we're, we're underneath this person and we have our, listen, you're still gonna fly your flag, you're still gonna have. Your, uh, quote unquote freedoms and your democracy, and you're still gonna have your political, I, I, you know, uh, um, identity. But the puppet strings will be being pulled by this one world governmental, this one world government, one world religious leader. Your, your religion, oh yeah, you can still worship your tree and, and, you know, bow down to your, uh, little, you know. Manmade statue, or, you know, the most deceptive religious bowing down to is things that we make with our own hands. Look at my house. Look at my company, look at my portfolio, look at my 401K. I'm bowing down to my wooden house. To my concrete statue. To my gold, oh, I don't have gods, are you kidding me preacher, I love God. But man, you oughta see how much money I got and stored up in my bank account, my gold and silver cash, oh, they are huge. That's the system. The religion is just gonna be, do what thou wilt, just do whatever you want, just don't hurt anybody. Just be a good person. Man, I think I could preach for four hours right now, just be a good person. What does that mean? Who's, that's the system. The currency, I'm not convinced that we'll all switch to. One kinda dollar bill or one kinda, uh, you know, all switch to the euro, or we'll all switch to the yen, or we'll all. Switch to the dollar. I think honestly that the governmental systems will be allowed to have their own currency, it will just be controlled. By the one person, by the one governmental system, it's already here, it's in front of us. When we look at these seven mountains, that's rising up out of the people. See, a lot of times we read that and we go, oh, the beast is coming out of the ocean, he's coming out of the sea. So I guess one day CNN will just, you know, some guy will be out there with a fishing pole and. So you're gonna reel up Leviathan and out of the, out of the ocean, here comes the beast and we're all gonna go, oh my God. Dude, wake up. The system's already here. Whether the beast is on the stage or not yet, we don't know. But Satan is setting the stage. Listen, we'll pick up here tomorrow night, we'll talk more about the Antichrist and the false prophet. The false prophet and the Antichrist are two people. Who will be possessed by Satan to cause the world to be deceived. Read chapter thirteen of Revelation yourself, because we'll see how the false prophet tomorrow, we'll see how he does miracles. And we'll talk about that we can't trust in just what we see, we have to trust in the spirit of God, which we can't see. Many people are fooled. Because they see a statue weeping tears over here, or we see, you know, uh, um, some sort of. Mystery over here, and, and I'm just saying, if we're not careful, we'll be deceived. And we'll miss Jesus. We'll be one of the virgins that lets the oil. The Holy Spirit run out. God bless you, thank you for joining us, we'll be back tomorrow night at six thirty. So let's pray, if you don't know, Jesus has your personal Lord and Savior, start that process today, start that road today. Just say, Jesus, I've, I need you, forgive me, open my eyes, don't let me be fooled. By the devil, God, I need you to take these scales off my eyes. Listen, if you'll just pray a prayer to Jesus, and ask him to come in your heart, ask him to change you, he'll do it. The Bible says, get baptized in water to separate yourself from your old past. And then get filled and baptized in the Holy Spirit. You can do that, you don't have to have a preacher there, God meets you in your own social distancing, he's there. He ain't, he ain't six feet from you, he's right in front of your face, he's right there saying, if you'll call out to me, I'll save you. Listen, if you'll pray that prayer, and you'll go and contact us on our website, we'll be super excited, we'll send you a Bible. We'll try to get connected with you, we wanna bless you in a mighty way, amen. God bless you, Father, we pray that anything that Cameron says, that's not from you, that you'll take it away. God, but everything that's from you, that you'll plant it deep into our hearts, so that God will worship you and will bless you and will not be fooled. By the enemy, will not be blinded. But God, you said you'll come and give the blind vision, and you'll give the lame the ability to walk, and you'll give the deaf ears. And you'll give the hardened heart a heart of flesh, so God, take out of us bitterness, take out of us fear. Take out of us pride and fill us in the mighty name of Jesus, and everybody said, amen. Thank you for joining us, we'll see you tomorrow night at six thirty, we'll be in Revelation, chapter thirteen.